Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the city council meeting for March 28th, 2018 to order. You know, at this time for our moment of silence as we enter the spring season, this is a, an important time for a lot of people throughout the world for a variety of different reasons, some of which obviously is just spring and new beginnings, other there are certain religious holidays. But whatever that is, as we move forward, let's think about what we've learned from the past and looking forward to the new opportunities that before us. With that, a moment of silence, please. Alderman Grip, would you please lead it, lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Grip.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
I'll present, your honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to wish you a good evening and as we begin this meeting of the city council, I again would like to not only welcome all those in attendance, but also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are really happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, families throughout our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic handheld devices as they can be disruptive and can interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the evening, of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium and wait to be recognized by myself for this committee, this council meeting and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So, thank you and again, welcome this evening. Will an Alderman move the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for March 14th?
It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. That's approved. Do we have a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much and welcome back from vacation. It's good to have you back. Will an Alderman move the approval of the report on the committee of the whole for March 21st? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much and that is approved. There are a number of appointments and two proclamations this evening. First of all, some of our appointments for the citizens advisory committee, there may be some of the folks here in town, I mean, here tonight from throughout town. First, there's, they're listed in the program, in the agenda, but I'll just read them off. There's a couple that each of the Aldermen and myself have the opportunity to point people that represent the entire community. There's some new appointments. Two of mine are David Freund and Martha Neal. Martha's here this evening. I'm not sure if David's here this evening. At large from Alderman Condon is Regan Johnson. Second ward, Johnny Byrd. Fifth ward, Olivia Williams. And sixth ward, Dale Gilmore. I know Dale's here. There's some reappointments. I have three. Mark Holloway, Joe Henry, Heinrichs, and Joseph Obelton. Also Alderman Grip has a reappointment. Jim Hopner, and I think Jim is here. Did I see Jim somewhere? Yeah, hi Jim. Jim Hopner. First ward, Tammy Lord. Third ward, Chad Kiefer. Fourth ward, Elizabeth Hodges. Seventh ward, Fred Klassen. And eighth ward, Christina Kelly. Is there a motion to approve all those appointments? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you all for your service. We'll have more appointments coming up as time moves on. There's work in front of you and we're excited to have you doing that work with us. We have two proclamations this evening. One is National Crime Victims Rights Week and we're going to start with Alderman Grip is going to lead that proclamation. I think. You're going to do, it's another one. Junior Achievement. Oh, that's Alderman Rossen. Sorry, Alderman.
That's okay. Easily confused between the two of us.
I had my, yeah.
Thank you, your honor.
That was good.
I was waiting for it.
I may use that again somewhere.
Feel free. Thank you. Proclamation. Whereas Americans are the victims of millions of crimes each year affecting individuals and communities and whereas years of investment in crime victims' rights and services have developed a system of victim response that can help victims recover from crime. And whereas reaching and serving all victims of crime is essential to supporting thriving communities because those who receive holistic services and support are more likely to remain invested in their communities. And whereas dedicated victim service providers are working every day to meet the needs of crime victims, yet there are still too many victims without meaningful access to rights and services. And whereas many victims face barriers such as isolation, distrust of authorities, language limitations, lack of transportation, or cultural barriers that keep them from accessing the services and criminal justice systems that can help them recover from crime. And whereas we must make a dedicated effort to expand the circle of those prepared to respond to victims and link them to the resources that can help them recover. And whereas engaging a broader array of healthcare providers, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses can provide new links between victims and services that improve their safety, healing, and access to justice. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensure that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach, or those who are challenging to reach or serve, are afforded their rights and receive a trauma-informed response. And whereas the city of Davenport is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors, now therefore, we, Mayor Frank Klipsch, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in the city of Davenport and reaffirm our commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year. And to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Dated this day, 28th day of March, 2018, and I so move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much and I think Rebecca Williams from the Child Protection Response Center is here. Is that correct? Oh, there you are. Or she's going to come up there. Come on up.
She couldn't make it, so she called me.
Thank you very much and thanks for being here. Your name is?
Susan Branstad.
Susan Branstad.
Yes.
Thank you, Susan. Let's get around to the picture.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wish I could stay, but I can't.
Our second proclamation for Junior Achievement Day will be read by Alderman Grip and he will be reading that and then we'll make the presentation. I think Dugle Nelson from the JA will be here this evening.
Thank you, your honor. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Davenport recognizes the junior achievement of the Heartland's purpose to inspire and prepare young people to succeed in a global economy. Whereas the city of Davenport will observe JA Day on April 5th, 2018, as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the Heartland for empowering our young people to own their economic success. Whereas junior achievement of the Heartland's educational contribution equips our young people to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Davenport. Whereas junior achievement of the Heartland includes opportunities for educators, parents, and community volunteers to connect classroom learning to life after graduation. Whereas it is fitting for Davenport to support the goals of junior achievement of the Heartland and we encourage the continuing partnership of business, education, and community in achieving these said goals. Whereas it is fitting for parents, educators, businesses, and other members of the community to join the celebration in an effort to ensure the future success and economic health of our young people and the communities in which they live. Now therefore, we, Mayor Frank Klipsch, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2018, as Junior Achievement Day in the city of Davenport and call on all citizens to support and recognize the opportunities afforded to the youth of our community through this great organization dated this 28th day of March, 2018. I move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Dugle, if you want to come on up.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Want to say a few words?
Please.
First of all, thank you Alderman Grip for reading that proclamation. Such great words. We appreciate that. Thank you to the council. Thank you, Mayor Klipsch. I know many of you are involved in junior achievement. Over 9,400 students in the city of Davenport last year were able to experience JA programs. That happened in over 460 classrooms throughout your community. Quite frankly, we couldn't do it without volunteers, such great volunteers like yourself, Mr. Mayor. You've been a big part of junior achievement over the year. We appreciate that. To all the volunteers in the room, all the supporters of junior achievement, we thank you for that. I get asked a lot, why JA and why is it important? We're teaching kids about financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and workplace readiness. We're really preparing our kids to go to work in the future. We're teaching them those great soft skills, those great lessons that maybe they don't learn in the classroom. So, volunteers are in the classroom. They're really bringing together what they learn in the classroom to what you folks do in your everyday workplace. So, thank you again, everyone. We really appreciate the city of Davenport getting behind junior achievement. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you for that. Have a great night.
Thank you, Dugle. And thank you for the work of that organization, again, impacting so many kids. We really appreciate it. We have one presentation this evening. I want to again welcome back my mayor pro tem, Alderman Mattson. He's been in China representing us and he's going to do a little presentation and a presentation actually, from some of the stuff he received there in China for us. So, turn it over. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, it's really wonderful that the partnership with the city, the school district, and the sister cities as the overarching kind of organization to, to guide partnerships and cooperation, quite frankly, now around the world. I know many people, to include Alderman Rossen, has done partnerships around the world in Ireland, so this is just another example of cooperation with city and school. So, Langfang, China, which is a southern suburb basically of Beijing, has been interested in being a partner with the city of Davenport for a few years. And Patrick and some of the other folks, and I want to say Mrs. Wyper, who's, I don't see tonight, but she was one of our wonderful traveling partners, who's the principal of West High, was here hosting with Patrick and the sister cities folks, a couple folks from Langfang last year. So, they have been wanting and engaging and pushing us to go there and, and sign an agreement. So, we got together and went and so I have a few pictures just to give you a little snapshot of what we did and what we talked about. Then I'll let my wonderful traveling partner, Patrick, talk about this and then Mayor, I'll ask you to come down and we have a wonderful gift to present to the city and the proclamation. So, just to give you a sense here, and I talked to a few folks, it's, this is a design of a city that they prepare. So, what they do, and they took us to this design center in Guan Province, which is southern part of Beijing. And Beijing is a city of 25 million people. They have seven rings around that city. Washington DC, the Beltway, that's one. Beijing has seven. Okay? So, that little screen in the lower left kind of part, that's one piece of the city. They'll put together hospitals, roads, schools, neighborhoods, parks, residential, plan it, put it out, and then put it on a two-story wall and they briefed us on it and then they build the city. They built this city in 10 years. All right? So, they talked to us about design and agriculture and how those things to go together and they're very, they were very interested in engaging us in conversation about how we build things and then they show us how they build things. So, this is one of our first meetings we had and this was really cool. So, we walk in, this is the International School in Langfang. So, to the left is our wonderful delegation and the sign, because we walk in there not necessarily knowing what to expect, but the sign says, "Welcome, the wonderful American Education Delegation to Langfang, China." And so, we sit on the left, they sit there and everything's protocol and we talk with the principal and their department chairs and teachers and engage in an education conversation. They were really interested in having that conversation with Mrs. Wyper, of course, and Patrick and, and my wife who teaches at Rock Island and then Mr. Wyper, who is a businessman here. And they were, they really want to engage and, and cooperate and exchange their students with our students, both at the university level and the high school level, and they wanted to see how we could do that. Some of the folks on the right there, the Chinese delegation, the principal of the school, the vice director of foreign affairs for Langfang and Hy-Vee Province, and other teachers. The education thing is a big thing to them because 300 million kids don't go past the eighth grade. So, they're really interested in that. This is us at the, now this was one of the cooler things I thought anyway. Patrick might like some of the others. Okay, so you'll see the sign later, but this is us, this is at the North China Institute for Aerospace Engineering. So, here we are having conversations with the president and leader of aerospace engineering in North China about how we can exchange ideas and do things together. So, that's just us, a picture at the end. That's us, me with the president, kind of just to show that because the American-China flag together and here we are, two folks from Davenport, Iowa, or three of us and we're engaging in conversation about aerospace engineering and how we can cooperate on that. This is, this is one of the culminating events we did. So, this is the actual signing ceremony, which was huge ballroom there in, in Langfang. The person to the right, she is the vice mayor for Langfang. So, vice mayors are equal to like governors there. And, and there I am and then I'm honored to be with the folks behind me and the Chinese folks there. The one directly overhead of, of the vice mayor is the director of foreign affairs for Hy-Vee Province, then the minister for Gouang County and the vice director for foreign affairs. This is the gift, Mayor, you'll get this here in a second. The gift that they gave us and so you can see this here, everyone that's watching and you'll, and we'll put that up, but the schoolchildren and history is big to folks in China, so they picked out five of the ancient families in China and they put their masks in there and they put this in the gift and that's the presentation to me and to the city and to you, Mayor. And this is our culminating event, so at the end of our trip, we went to the US Embassy in Beijing and had a scheduled half-hour meeting with Ambassador Branstad at the second largest embassy in the world. He met with us for an hour and a half. And all his department and agency directors were there and they engaged us in commerce and economics and political and back and forth conversation. So, he was very gracious and hospitable and it was wonderful conversation that we had and we, and he was very happy to see that we had signed an agreement of cooperation with Langfang because he started with the sister cities state in China and the cooperation efforts, he sees that it's continuing and Davenport's leading the way in that. So, those are the quick pictures. It was an honor to be part of the sister cities and the cooperation with the school district and the city to do that. I'll let Patrick say a few words and then Mayor, I'll ask you to come down.
Please, that'd be great.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. I'm Patrick O'Leary. I'm president of Davenport Sister Cities and some of you may know, Davenport Sister Cities is a voluntary organization whose mission is to promote community relations across borders with communities that seem complimentary to us in other countries. Currently, we have five sister cities and, or friendship cities. They cover Ireland, Germany, Brazil, Mexico, and now China. So, this particular trip was initiated by the people from Langfang who actually have come to Davenport twice and they are eager to establish a relationship with us. And their conceptualization is a exchange of folks, not just officials, but citizens, professionals, retirees, and youth. So, I encourage all of you, you're invited, to go to China. Truly, I may be a stretch, I know, but I encourage all my students at Ambrose, I tell, say to them that they are not fully educated unless they've been to Asia. And I will stand by that statement tonight. And so, I encourage you, it's such an incredible future world that we don't, it doesn't get enough press here and the press that it gets tend to be a little bit sort of, it's a challenge to us, et cetera, et cetera. They're coming, they may be taking some of our industry, et cetera. So, we'd like to push back at that a little bit. And so, I'm truly asking you to think about getting over there. City, city administrators, I would like to specifically request that you get a, somebody from the Public Works Department, Planning Department, and in cooperation with the local county and/or state, the DNR. I think those three make sense and I think we're going to be at your door asking for some funds to get those folks to China in the very near term. So, I want to telegraph that right now because I think it makes sense and that's how we're going to keep this relationship alive. We have a lot to learn from them and they are sending another delegation to us probably within the year. So, this is real and again, the invitation for you to get over there is very real, plus all the other cities. They will wine and dine you. We had six huge banquets, banquets, Romanesque banquets, so they, they will really wine dine you. That's all I have to say. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. And Alderman Mattson, if I may, very quickly.
Absolutely.
They came here last year.
Yes.
And unfortunately, or whatever, they were insistent upon seeing me. However, I had just had my hip replaced and I was in, I was still out, actually. I was in the recovery room and they were, keep trying, can we go see him in the recovery room? So, fortunately, my assistant in Nevada said, probably not a good idea, but they have another great gift that we have upstairs as well that we'll have to proudly display with that as well. Interestingly, the importance of Iowa and Davenport in particular, as Dr. O'Leary and I were talking, representatives from Wuhan, China are also interested. Their representative had come to visit me earlier within the last year and they will be here, representatives, next year during the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative in September 18, 19, and 20. So, this is developing a great relationship with China. Thank you for the work that you've done. Obviously, you represented us very well. So, let me come around. I'd be honored to do that.
Please, Mayor. Yes. Yes, things like clean energy, water, all that is, they're very interested in now.
So, first, from the vice mayor, on behalf of Langfang, she wanted to make sure I presented this to the city. So, again, five ancient history families of China to, just a token of their appreciation to the city to engage in this relationship.
Thank you. Well, let's make sure we show.
Make sure Rachel gets a shot. Thank you.
Okay, so this is one of two copies. One stayed there and one is here and it's, one side's in Chinese and.
The other side's in American, but I need my glasses.
And just so you know, Alderman Mattson's going to read the Chinese side, by the way.
Jing Zhang. Okay. Memorandum of Understanding, Friendly Exchange, and Economic Cooperation Between Langfang City of the People's Republic of China and Davenport City of USA. Langfang City of the People's Republic of China and Davenport City of USA, acting in accordance with the principles of the Joint Communicate on the Establishment of Diplomatic Relations between the People's Republic of China and the United States of America and wishing to enhance mutual understanding and friendship between the Chinese and USA peoples, consolidate and develop friendly cooperation between the two cities have agreed as follows. The two cities will, on the basis of trust and friendly exchanges, seek for a cooperation relationship. The two cities will carry out in accordance with the principles of equality and mutual benefit, exchanges and cooperation in various forms to promote common prosperity and development. The two cities will seek various exchanges in the fields of education, science, technology, administration, culture, education, and sports. And the two cities agree to make a concerted effort on the basis of friendly exchanges and economic cooperation to establish a sister city. This memorandum is done in duplicate in the Chinese and English languages, both texts of being equally authentic. It shall come into force from the date of signature, March 20th, 2018. People's Government in Langfang, Hy-Vee, People's Republic of China, signed, vice mayor, and then Council of Davenport, Iowa, signed by me. So, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's get that picture too. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for picking that up. Don't know where it'd be back in China.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Put that in there and post that up.
All of Ambrose would be proud of the government.
I know you will all join me in thanking Alderman Mattson and that whole team for representing us so well there in China and we want to thank you for that.
Mayor, if I may once, I just want to again add to Mrs. Wyper, who was a big part of this, the West High principal, she's not able to be with us tonight, but she was hugely engaging and they were very interested in, in her, in the high school and how the education component can be part of this and she was a major part of this. So, I just want to say that.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Ambrose, did you have something you wanted to share quickly?
Yes, your honor. First off, you know, I think Mike did an outstanding job as our ambassador for the city. And when we do set up our city embassy over there, I'd like to suggest Alderman Mattson become our ambassador.
I'd be happy to take Alderman Ambrose to China.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you both. It's, it'd be wonderful having both of you there. It would be interesting. Again, as we move forward, thank you all and I know we'll have a chance to thank the representatives, hopefully personally, at some time as well. Our next is petitions and communication from our city council members and myself and we're going to let Alderman Dickman as our community engagement leader to start off the discussion.
You know, there was, there was so much going on tonight that I think I'll, I'll hold any updates for next week.
Great, thank you. Was anyone else with any comments this evening? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, honor. On April 6th, the Davenport Knights of Columbus will be hosting the state convention for all the Knights of Columbus, the state of Iowa and, you know, it's outstanding Catholic organization. You know, we did the proclamation for crime victims, you know. Marcy's Law is a crime victim, victim right legislation that they're trying to pass in our state legislatures and, you know, so they're, they're working that. And if you have the opportunity, you should look it up on the internet and find out what the challenges are for the victims of crime. You know, a statistic most people don't realize, the United States, over $200 billion a year are spent dealing with criminals from the federal government, the state government, and our great local governments. So, even here in Scott County, you know, several million dollars a year is spent on dealing with criminals, you know, whether it's our local police, our county jail and law enforcement, our state prison system and state law enforcement or the federal government. So, you know, it's an outrageous amount of money that we're forced to spend dealing with criminals and it really has a huge impact on the economy.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Two quick items. I don't see anybody else with this one. I just want to mention, first of all, city offices will be closed on Friday as a holiday for Friday, so there will not be the city offices here and, but there's a lot, number of city services that will be running as usual, so you can check the website related to that. I just want to note on Saturday morning at 9:30 actually, there's a dedication of the new Quad City Veterans Outreach on West Locust, right across from the fairgrounds. And also at 11:30, I see Ralph Kelly here, there's also going to be the Hilltop Easter Egg Hunt at Cork Hill Park, so I plan on being there as I was last year. It's a wonderful event with so many kids and families there, so thank you for all the group work that you do, Ralph. And seeing no other comments, we're going to move right into our agenda. Our first item, we have one item on the discussion agenda. It's an individual approval of items on the discussion agenda. This is a third consideration of ordinance for case REZ 17-08, being the request, the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to rezone 37.63 acres, more or less, of property generally located between Harrison Street and Pershing Avenue and between East 12th and 5th Streets from R4 Moderate Density Dwelling District, comma, R6M High Density Dwelling District, comma, C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, next, C2 General Commercial District, next, C4 Central Business District. a dedication of the new Quad City Veterans Outreach on West Locust, right across from the fairgrounds. And also at 11:30, I see Ralph Kelly here, there's also going to be the Hilltop Egg, Easter Egg Hunt at Cork Hill Park. So I plan on being there as I was last year. It's a wonderful event with so many kids and families there. So thank you for all the group work that you do, Ralph. And seeing no other comments, we're gonna move right into our agenda. Our first item, we have one item on the discussion agenda. It's an individual approval of items on the discussion agenda. This is a third consideration of ordinance for case REZ 17-08, being the request, the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to rezone 37.63 acres, more or less, of property generally located between Harrison Street and Pershing Avenue and between East 12th and 5th Streets from R4 Moderate Density Dwelling District, comma, R6M High Density Dwelling District, comma, C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, next, C2 General Commercial District, next, C4 Central Business District, and finally, M1 Light Industrial District, to a PID which is a planned institutional district. Are there any comments from the public at this point? If you would, please, your name, ward, name or address, or number or address.
Hi, I'm Olivia Williams and Ward Five. I brought a few things to read because there have been three reports that have been written by lawyers critical of the Bradford Report and the treatment of the disparate impact on residents in the Palmer PID. And this comes at a time ironically, 50, 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act is next week or in two weeks. And so like the Davenport newsletter for right now is about the Fair Housing Act on the, on the front page. So the Fair Housing Act, this goes into kind of like how it was started, coming out of the civil rights movement. But the Fair Housing Act prohibits housing discrimination on the basis of age, race, creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, marital status, national origin or ancestry, religion, disability, familial status or gender identity. And so the Mosaic Report commissioned by the city said there was no disparate impact on communities in the PID, but there, several lawyers have written, and all of you have these, that that report is flawed. And we haven't heard you discuss those in these, at least the meetings I've been to here. So I wanted to put them kind of into the record and for the audience to hear them. So I'm reading some excerpts from Calvin Bradford's report first. He says, "As the Mosaic Report concludes, the PID increases the housing for students but displaces the population of non-students." And it says "There are no negative impacts for students and all the potential negative impacts fall on the non-student population. There are significant racial and ethnic disparities between the students and non-student segments of the PID population. That is, the PID represents two distinct impacts for two very different populations. The Mosaic Report fails to develop a separate minority percentage for the current non-student population. That is, the only segment of the population negatively impacted by the PID. And this is a very important and the most important failure of the analysis." So Palmer students are more likely to be white than our residents of the city as a whole. We know this. In the approach, the impact of the policy should be assessed primarily on the minority non-student population. This requires data on the current non-student racial and ethnic population of the households of the PID and the estimated non-student racial and ethnic population of the PID after the build-out. But the Mosaic Report not only fails to separate these two segments of the population, but it uses estimated distribution for the full current PID population, which is more white because it has more students. So subtracting, so if you use the data provided in the Mosaic Report, one can estimate the non-student population of the PID. And if you were to subtract the 111 Palmer students from the 360 persons in the PID, it leaves a non-student population of 249 people. If you subtract 91 white Palmer students from the 235 white students, that leaves 144 white students in the non-student population. Finally, subtracting the 20 Palmer minority students from the 125 minority students leaves 105 minorities in the non-student PID. This allows one to calculate the separate non-student population percentages for whites and minorities. The estimated non-student white percentage is about 52% and the resulting minority percentage is about 42%. So the Mosaic Report indicates that after the PID build-out, there would be an additional 51 students. Using the racial and ethnic distribution of Palmer students, the report indicates that 42 of these students would be white, with the remaining nine being minorities. The Mosaic Report indicates that after the PID build-out, there would be a loss of 84 members of the non-student population. According to the Mosaic Report, 55 of the displaced persons would be white and 29 would be minorities, but this distribution is based on applying the racial and ethnic percentages estimated for the entire PID area, including the, the student population, which is overwhelmingly white. Using the percentages calculated for the non-student population that I just discussed, about 48 of the displaced persons would be white and 36 would be minorities. So the current population estimated that there were 235 whites in the PID and based on the recalculations, there'd be 228 whites after build-out.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Aldermen and Women. Dave Kenny and Murray Dickman's Ward, second Ward. I can see that far. I've got my phone off today, so it's dead, so it won't ring. I just read the Mosaic Report briefly, some of the conclusions on it. And I was glad to see that the house on 7th Street in Perry was not included. It was a big red brick house because I drove by that house and saw it. I hope they're not gonna tear that house down because it's very historic. And that was part of my talk last time, is that I never really got to look at some of the houses that, that are gonna be torn down or that are proposed to be torn down. I found out, reading the report, there's two recreational fields that Palmer wants to build, one in the northeast section. And if you read the Mosaic Report, they said, under the recommendations, that that could be something that maybe could be scrapped and then there wouldn't be such an impact on the community if they didn't tear down those houses in that area. But, and also, one of the recommendations was, I printed it out, but I can't really read it that well. It's getting the community together with Palmer to discuss some of these things before you go ahead and vote on it. I, you know, there was this meetings last year, I guess, but I don't know what the turnout was. But now there's an interest and I don't know what the big hurry is. Why can't we can't sit down with Palmer and talk about some of these things before we go ahead and vote on this? Instead of just, well, there's been some changes, but instead of basically rubber stamping it and, and putting what they had in place and there's been a few little changes. I don't know why we have to hurry on this. I mean, and also the report, the Mosaic Report mentioned some nonprofits that would like to get together with Palmer before this is all done. Because once you stamp it, it's done, I assume. And whatever is written in, in the PID is gonna happen, you know. So this, this is my urge is that, you know, you're probably gonna pass it tonight. I know you, nobody wants to stop development. But I don't think of, they need two recreational fields there, myself. And we have the power to say, pass this, or let's just sit down and talk about this first and go back and pass it later. You know, that, that's, that's what I would prefer. But, and, and that's what they said in the Mosaic Report. I mean, why are you spending probably $50,000 for this report and then not following the recommendations? You might as well just not even do the report. Then you save everybody money. You know, that's, that's just the way I feel about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is John DeTay. I live at 1110 East High Street in Davenport. There's been so many things talked about tonight that makes me really proud about of being back in Davenport, grew up in Davenport. My mom dragged us out, door knocking, very early in my youth. We door knocked for Sonny Owens, the first black Alderman elected by the city of Davenport in 1971 when I was 10. So I, I, I believe in the democratic process. I love our neighborhoods and I love all the people that live here in Davenport. I also share the, the feeling that we, this will probably go forward. But it's hard to understand how the Mosaic Report is being rubber stamped by a council and endorsed by a city when there's three fair housing experts that have found deep flaws in that report. And then to turn and not accept any of the recommendations in the Mosaic Report. And so I'm gonna read just two of those recommendations that I, if, if there's no way for you to add this to the PID, if you could amend it or find a way to at least follow the recommendations that this report that you're gonna probably approve tonight, despite fair housing experts saying that is a flawed report. And what, and embracing whatever repercussions that may have for the city when those fair housing experts communicate their, their understanding with, with this vote. But the recommendations were to incorporate conflicting points of view in the planning and decision-making process to craft reasonable conditions that could be attached to the zoning approval, which might mitigate or eliminate potential displacement or demographic change. That's one. And then the second is to determine types of financial support that, that, that the college or the city can offer to help advance the city's goals of increasing housing stability for Davenport residents earning extremely low incomes. Not one of us is responsible for the segregation in, that we experience every single day in Davenport. We, we inherited a segregated city. Your own maps in the consolidated plan shows concentrated black populations in very small pockets throughout the city, including the Palmer neighborhood. Not one of us is responsible for the past, but every single one of us is responsible for its future. And by just rubber stamping this report, moving forward, says that the city is not taking seriously the segregation that exists in our city today. That's what Michael Seng said in this final report that was sent to all of you this week. He made the example of Chicago. Chicago did not just wake up one day and find itself to be segregated. Segregation in Chicago, like in much of the rest of this country, resulted from intentional policies and practices over the years. Even when the policies and practices were not overtly intentional, they were often followed without any consideration of their effect in perpetuating segregation. Please do not perpetuate segregation in our city. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
Good evening, good evening. I'm Reverend Jay Wolin of the Unitarian Universal congregation. I live in the 5th Ward. So I would like to say, I want to look at this from a religious perspective. My religious values speak to justice, equity, and compassion in human relations and the inherent worth and dignity of every person. Now, I have friends and members who are part of the Palmer family. They are an integral part of our community and I support Palmer. But I also want Palmer as well to be a good citizen to this city. I would ask them to make payments in lieu of taxes or pilots, which many cities do often ask of, of nonprofits who are purchasing properties and that that money be focused towards fair and affordable housing. I think we really need to be intentional about how we are caring for the citizens and residents of this community. How are we treating our neighbors? And so I ask you to consider this as you discern your decision, to make sure that we are taking care of the most vulnerable within our community, to make sure that we provide fair and affordable housing, and to work with all members of the community and all different aspects of the community, including Palmer and St. Ambrose and Genesis, to come together, to work together on a solution. Because there are people that are living in hotels, there are people that are just being forced out of their homes and are living multiple people in households because they can't afford a place to live. And we as a city should strive to be better than that. We should be strive to provide fair and affordable housing, to care for all of our residents, not just those that can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak at this time?
Ron Swinder, 2366 West 47th. I sit here, had to watch TV the last couple of weeks. I found a beautiful lady that said yes to me and I've been working on some wedding stuff. So, but this is an issue I feel so much important. Yes, there's gonna be some separation in this community, but we spent millions in downtown rehab for affordable housing. Yes, there's a bunch. I know a couple that are living in hotels. It's because they got evicted for non-payment of rent, some circumstances. I understand that. But we keep adding and adding and adding affordable housing as we're doing our renovation. And I took a drive tonight up by Palmer. It's quite an area. We, we have some work to do, but I, I truly would like to see the city council table this for two cycles. Let's get the neighborhood, some of these groups together. I believe Palmer is a great neighbor. I believe Palmer's gonna do a lot for this community. When Palmer becomes who they were, the number one elite chiropractic in the world, it's gonna be dollar for dollar, what they're willing to spend, and not for city tax dollars, what they're willing to spend is gonna make us a better community. It's gonna bring people in here that's gonna spend the money. But let's, like it said tonight, let's slow down a little bit, maybe a cycle or two. Let, let's see, you know, yes, we do have some affordable. Do we need more? Are there resources available? Yes, there is. But there's not a resource to help everyone. That's not possible. But we as a city must take care of our own. If it, if this planned development needs to wait a week or two, it's not gonna break it. Palmer's not gonna bail on it. Let's get more people involved in this. Let's talk to them. Let's see what's available to make sure. Palmer's a good neighbor. Palmer's been around forever. They, they've stuck millions in their existing buildings. They want to do more for this community. You know, I'd like to see this continue. You know, like the mayor said, we are a destination. That's what we want to be. We want to be the destination. With a first-class, world-class, number-one chiropractic school is gonna enhance that. So let's take a little time, folks. In a couple of weeks, even two cycles, ain't gonna hurt anything. They're not going anywhere. And people have spoken. Let's see what the city council does. Because we elect you as our representatives. You guys have done a wonderful job. Sometimes we're right, sometimes we're wrong. But our opinions matter and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else in the public who want to speak at this time? It's been, the motion has been moved. Are there any discussion from any Aldermen?
I'm sorry, is it okay if I?
Pardon me? No, we didn't have a second. So go ahead. We'll let you go ahead and do that.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you. My name is Abut Udo. I am over at 13358, West 8th Street. And I just wanted to talk about what I heard some weeks ago. I just learned about a new concept, which we, which everyone knows by now. It's, it's the CLT, Community Land Trust. And over in, over in...
Excuse me, sir, if I, is this related to this particular issue?
Yeah, yeah, to the...
Okay, great.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So the, the Community Land Trust essentially is broken up into two. It's either a homeowner type of community land trust, or it's a, it's a rental form of community land trust. And I've, I've just been, ever since I learned about it, it was really interesting. I, I started doing a little research and turns out that there's some right now in Iowa that's out in Ames. And it was, it was led by a gentleman named Dale. Won't give his middle name or last name, just for those reasons. And so Dale, Dale started it. And he started off by first either purchasing with cash or purchasing with terms, the properties. And once he did that, sorry, not the properties, the land, once he did that, he partnered up with other funds. He partnered up with other nonprofits to be able to build on top of the... be able to build on top of the land. Uh, and right after doing that, um, they were able to sell the land to people that didn't have, sorry, they, they sold the property to people that didn't have enough funds to purchase both the land and the property. Um, e- e- essentially, essentially what, what they did was, um, they created an avenue to reduce cost, but also add, add tax incentives, um, add tax revenues, since those were vacant properties at the time, and they filled them up with units. Um, so, the reason I bring all of that is because basically with, with, with a Community Land Trust, I think that, um, we can, we can create an avenue for people to come together and have ownership of plots of land where, um, different activities or different events can be held within that land. So currently, right now, what we're brainstorming is using, um, um, like cheaper methods to, to, um, to build homes. So those include, uh, shipping containers, right? They also include, um, Legos. Legos is something that, um, Blackhawk has used in the past, uh, for, for one of their, one of their properties and one of their buildings for their, for their school. Um, and it reduces the cost drastically. So, my, my thoughts are, right, if, if there's any way that we can use some, some land, whi- whichever one it is that's vacant currently, that's not bringing anything, that people have to mow, 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 mow the lawn and, and increase the, the cost for, for, uh, of, of increasing the cost, um, when, when, when it doesn't have to be instead, it could be used as tax revenues currently. By it being community la, by it being something ran by the community, uh, essentially it gives the community more ownership of, of what's going on. Um, also, I, I feel like it's, it's outlets for, for other organizations that, that believe in, 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 um, that, that, that believe in, in building micro-communities, right? That can actually affect a macro, on a macro level. Uh, so-
If I may, just one more time. These are great ideas. This, what we're really, this particular time, there's other point in the agenda where we can have more of this discussion. This really relates to the rezoning of that particular piece of property. That may be some ideas that you've shared in other parts of the community as well to create land that may be available. So they're kinda two different subjects, and we thought was well worthwhile. We have our community development planning people, it might be a good idea to share some of your ideas with them as well, because we're looking at expanding urban revitalization and, and our core community, and there may be some techniques that you've outlined that might be very helpful with that.
Got you. So, I'm sorry, are you, are you saying, how, how exactly is it different? I, I don't get that. I'm sorry.
Well, this is, this is basically, the planned institutional district is an area that they have a zoned area that, in this case, Palmer will have to purchase the land. It's not automatically a gift. They have to go and buy land from anybody on that property that they don't own, and that gives them an opportunity, this lays out a basic idea. So even if this happens tonight, it may take years to execute this plan. Um, and we are committed as a community to make sure we deal with urban revitalization and affordability of housing. This is one, this is one issue first, and that, that's why I was saying, they, they work in kind of an idea, but this is a, really a zoning issue related to that particular piece of property.
Okay, that, that makes perfect sense. I, I figured that they, they kinda worked in tandem, I, I know my times, I, I figured that they kinda worked in tandem, just because, um, these, these plots of land could be used for the people that are possibly being displaced, you know? It's, it's just, uh, it's just, it's just a solution. It's another-
Yeah, I agree. Thank you very much for your ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Well, let's try that again. Motion has been moved, is there a second? It's been second, moved and seconded now, are there any aldermen's with any comments they'd like to make? And I see Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, honor. You know, Palmer's been a vital part of our community since 1890s. They have an economic input to our community, over eighty million dollars a year. You know, to be dictating to somebody like Palmer on such a huge and important project, you know, as you listen to some of these people, I don't think that's right. Gentleman gets up and, you know, says, "We're segregating, we're segregating our city." You know, that, that's a outrageous statement. You know, we're a city that's very compassionate, we look out for our citizens, and, uh, you have a bunch of fair housing expert lawyers that are over analyzing a, a study for this project, and, uh, and then they contact us and make these outrageous statements. I'm, um, you know, it's disappointing that I have to, as someone that represents that area, listens, you know, I gotta listen to this stuff, but, uh, for Palmer College, you know, they heal people, they care about people. To hear these statements, I think is outrageous, so I don't think there's any need to table this project. The mayor summed it up quite well, you know, it's gonna be phased in over several years, and, uh, let's get things going.
Thank you. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, honor. Um, as I, um, mentioned in the other two considerations weekly, I'll just keep, I'll say it again, and I know Ms. Spiegel is, uh, concerned with it too. I, I'll ask that as we progress and, and, um, as we, um, work with the staff and work with Palmer and everyone, as property is acquired, as, if and as property is acquired, um, 'cause it isn't acquired yet, um, they have a plan, but there's still a lot of things that have to be done. But as they develop, I would ask our city staff to work collaboratively with Palmer, with our folks, with anyone that potentially is impacted here, to assist, to help, because I think, um, and Brandon, you can just nod, but I think we've been given, um, some reports, there are available, uh, housing areas that some folks can, um, possibly, um, go to, but we should, uh, because we are compassionate, I hope, uh, to work with folks to help them find reasonable and maybe even, uh, ideas like the gentleman said, um, uh, to, um, make better areas, um, in the community. 'Cause I think we do that pretty good, but we can always learn and we can always, um, do better. Um, but i- if people are being displaced because of something we're supporting, then I think we should, we have a responsibility, uh, to help them find, um, good, appropriate housing. So I'll ask that again, as I've said before. And I will thank everyone, um, that's can, come here to speak. Um, uh, the democratic process and, and open and transparent government is, is an important, uh, part of what we do. Certainly, I think it's important, uh, to listen to everyone. We, we might not agree, that's, that's human nature, but, um, I thank you for coming and I appreciate your comments, and, um, I would ask you to continue to do that, um, and continue to keep us educated and continue to keep us informed about different points of view, um, 'cause at least from my perspective, and I think for, for many of my colleagues, we appreciate that. And so I appreciate you coming and giving us your thoughts, um, and I hope that you continue to stay engaged, and I know at least some of you will, 'cause I know you. Um, and so keep, keep working with us a- as this moves forward, or any other project moves forward, uh, to, to enlighten us about your thoughts and, and keep us educated. Thank you.
If I may, as a quick follow-up to Alderman Mattson's comments about, with, to, uh, our city administrator, I think that's something we will do anyway. I mean, we are going to be working with, with Palmer, and as you may notice, as you've seen, our, uh, our goals that we've established for our community over the next two years, hearing from all of you, urban revitalization, affordable housing, all of that tied together is one of our top goals. So we are gonna be working through that as a whole community, so we're committed to that, and this is part of that whole urban revitalization. But I think as, as mentioned by the, Mr. Seng in his letter, um, make sure we deal with inclusive solutions, and that's what we are committed to do. So with that, I wanna, uh, recognize Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you. I also just wanted to thank everybody for coming down tonight. I do appreciate your time. Um, I know it's certainly time out of your schedule, so we do appreciate it. We appreciate your feedback and your thoughts. Um, I'm confident this is a very thorough process, been through it a few times, um, and there have been a lot of meetings, um, this has been going on for a very long time by the time it gets to us. Um, and again, I'm confident that staff will continue this collaborative, uh, relationship with Palmer, so I'm confident that it, it doesn't just end here tonight. Um, this is truly just another step in the process. So thank you, Palmer, for your investment. Thank you, neighbors, um, for working with us and bringing some thoughts to our attention, um, so we can address those as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tompkins, Alderman Dickman?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, I know that some of the concerns that have been expressed are about potential displacement that might hap, start happening in a year or two. I was wondering if someone from staff could talk about some of the affordable housing that's going up in the area? I know there's at least one project that's either slated or in the works, you're better at keeping track of what stage things are in the process, but if you could just talk about that briefly and, and how many units are going up, uh, in similar areas that are affordable?
Alderman Dickman, if I may add to that, I think, uh, you've told me there are thirty-three or thirty-two affordable housing units in Scott County, and there's about twenty-nine of them are in Davenport. I think that's to that offense, so that's part of our commitment, but please answer the question if you would, that would be great. Thank you.
Bruce Berger, your community planning and economic development director. Um, yeah, there, the, as several aldermen have mentioned, and, and, and I'm sure most are aware, Davenport does, we feel, uh, uh, at least a, a very good job, hopefully, at, at providing affordable housing. There is always more we can do. Um, and so with that qualifier, yeah, there, low-income housing tax credits are one vehicle, one product that is made available by, um, both federal and, and state, um, policies. Um, and we do have, I think it is roughly twenty-nine out of thirty-one low-income housing tax credit projects are actually in Davenport, um, the, out of the thirty-one in the county. Those serve a certain populated, a certain, uh, population usually at or below sixty percent of median family. You may have seen some other projects around town, um, 501 Brady, uh, roughly half of that, uh, new development, um, serves at or below eighty percent of median family income. Um, there are, uh, public housing, um, units that the city of Davenport manages, um, as well as Section Eight or Housing Choice vouchers, ASH vouchers, which are for veterans, those serve generally in the at or below thirty percent of median family. Um, so there's, there's overlapping, um, different layers and, and without, you know, again, some of it's gonna be dependent upon if Palmer moves forward, if they do acquire some properties, and if there are folks displaced at that time, what the current economic status of those folks are, what they're looking for in terms of housing and all. But yeah, I think it's fair to say that there are, there is existing opportunities out there, and then we'll continue to work with Palmer too as they move forward and, 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 you know, do, do the best we can to try to find, find, find places.
Thank you, Bruce. And there are, there are also market rate units going up, um, in a similar area, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Uh, Alderman McGinnis?
I also wanted to thank everyone who's come and spoken, uh, over the last, um, really six weeks and before, um, in this process. Um, I, I live in this area, I, I've lived in this area for twenty-one years, I live a few blocks south of here. Um, and, um, so I, I do, uh, I love my neighbors and I, I love our, the diversity in my neighborhood. Um, and, um, but I hear you, and, um, I would also like to say that, you know, the PID process is still a relatively new process for the city. I think it is not perfect. Um, I think certainly the city has, you know, tried to develop a process that, um, uh, you know, moves through steadily and, and, you know, has, uh, you know, has, um, sections where people can have input, but I'm not sure, um, again, it's a fairly new process to the city, and I'm not sure it's completely whole or completely as it should be, and I think it's something certainly we should look at in terms of tweaking. I appreciate and think we should always question, um, when things are being changed, when there are proposed zoning changes. I think questions are good, I think they're important, um, I think they make us a better community. So I don't, um, I guess I, as an alderman, would probably never, um, if something of this, uh, scale comes before me as an alderman, just say, "Great," you know, because it has a dollar amount attached to it. I think we always have to ask questions, and you have done that, um, and I wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Kahlul?
Thank you, mayor. You know, I, um, I appreciated the words from one of our newest, uh, community advocacy committee members, Olivia, saying, "Uh, what do you think, Alderman? Why, why are you coming to the conclusion that you've come to?" It appears that most all the aldermen and alderwomen are saying that they are going to vote yes to this particular motion, uh, but why? And so I, I think it's important that the public does hear from their elective re- representatives as to why they're making decisions that they make, and, um, I don't think there's any better presentation than, that could be made than the one that Alderman Rossen gave at the first hearing. I thought it was very thorough, um, but six weeks have passed, five weeks have passed since that time, there's been a lot of public input, a lot of people have had things to say, and, and I do appreciate the things that have been said. Um, and, and I, you de, you deserve to know how it is that those things that you've said have been incorporated into the way that I think about this motion. Um, first of all, I think in terms of the Mosaic study, um, the disparate analysis study, uh, council has told us that we're compliant with the law. I believe that's the case. I know that there are going to be differing opinions, there always are, but the fact is, just because we're compliant, doesn't make it right. And I think that's an important point. Uh, I myself, you know, have come to the conclusion that this is the right thing for the city of Davenport, all ninety-nine thousand of us. Uh, will people be impacted? They will. You know, I had a award meeting, uh, a month or so ago, and it was in regards to Costco. We talked about Costco, and I had a lady who was going to be inconvenienced by what was going on there at Costco. She's no longer going to be able to take a left turn onto Fairhaven. And I looked over at, uh, our, our city engineer and said, "Is there some way that this could be alleviated?" No, there isn't. This lady's gonna be inconvenienced, and it's unfortunate, it's a hurt that we take. Some people are gonna be displaced by this, depending on how, how much property Palmer is going to be able to purchase. That's true, it's gonna happen. But again, I think it's in the best interest of the people of the city. John DeTay talked about the, uh, the three recommendations from the Mosaic study, things that perhaps we hadn't done as well as we could have. Uh, the first one's first recommendation was to, uh, incorporate conflicting points of view under the planning and decision-making process. I think that, that between the Historic Preservation Commission, the, the Plan and Zoning Commission, Palmer, your input, the council's thoughts and talk about discussion about these things, I think that we have done that. I don't think that discussion is ever over. Certainly, the alleys and roads that, uh, the, uh, the plan talks about vacating, those issues will come before the council for approval. Uh, those are not formal at this point. So I think that there has been a good deal of, 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 uh, talk about, uh, conflicting points of view. Uh, I think that that discussion needs to continue. Second recommendation was to consider alternate siting of features and uses within the PID. You know, maybe this is one area that, uh, we will need to work with, um, most definitely in terms of as we move forward. I think the continued discussion with Palmer about where placement goes, none of the things at this point is permanent, they're still planning, it's a plan, uh, but there's one area that we probably could definitely put some effort to, it is in terms of trying to work with them on the layout of the campus. The third, uh, third item was the, uh, the issue of, of collaboration, partnerships between Palmer and neighborhood nonprofits. You know, a couple, three weeks ago, Palmer was here and they talked about what they were planning to do in terms of collaboration. I think that there will be collaborative initiatives, we've heard from other people, from, uh, open forum, talking about what they would like to do, so I think that that is ongoing, again, an ongoing process that we'll have to work with. So much of this, um, is, is difficult, because what we've done, just like Elmore, the Elmore overlay concept, is we've put this out there in front of people, and so now there's something that you can point to and say, "I don't like this, I don't like this, this is wrong." It's a transparent process, and that makes it more difficult for people that sit on a podium like this, because it is totally open to view, uh, the decisions that we're making, every, the bases for which we're making decisions are all out in front of everybody, but everybody can't make the decision. And so you've elected us to make a decision, and, and I, I believe that the right decision, as far as I'm concerned tonight, is to vote to approve this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kahlul. Alderman Rossen?
Thank you, your honor. So, I'm not even sure where to begin. So I'm gonna keep my comments brief and just to the point. I do wanna make a, a quick comment upfront, that it is somewhat irrelevant how much money an organization brings to the community, um, and the fact they've been here a long time. The Palmer project, I mean, that shouldn't, that's not the basis for our decision, or it's not the basis for my decision. Uh, the Palmer PID is actually going to be a good thing for the community. In an area that has been stressed and blighted for how many decades, that's a great development that could spur additional development. Um, the conversation is not over, as Alderman Kahlul has stated, this is just the beginning of a very long process. The Palmer PID is a, is at least a ten-year process, understand that. Understand that. So if this gets passed tonight, it is not the case that tomorrow morning, there's going to be 105 people on the street. Palmer currently does not own any housing that houses non-residents, non-residents. So let's be clear on that. They do not currently own property that has non-residents in it. They own property that has students in it. Not to say they won't eventually maybe own some property if those landlords decide to sell to Palmer. I mean, who knows? That may or may not happen. If I had rental property in the Palmer PID, I would keep it. Sorry, sorry, Palmer, because that's a great stream of steady students to rent from me. But this whole revitalization piece, the Palmer PID, we can either see this, you could take this as a glass half-empty or half-full, and I choose to see it as half-full, as an opportunity to go forward with a revitalization plan that's inclusive of everybody in the community. I do expect and anticipate Palmer to be involved in that process. We have a lot of work to do. And at once, I'm also amazed that Palmer has become the key sticking point for housing issues because I do believe we've had housing issues for decades in Davenport. And just to clarify, Davenport is segregated. That is from a long history of laws and things that have happened from the federal government to the state to the city. It, it is not the case that a bunch of people in poverty and a bunch of minorities got together one day and said, "Hey, let's all move to this geographical territory." Yeah. That, that wasn't a group decision. So we do have segregated areas in the neighborhood, and it's important to recognize that and not sweep it under the carpet. And as we do a revitalization plan, we need to deal with that as a reality that we've inherited because of the history that we're coming out of. So it's important not to ignore that. But overall, I will vote yes for this project because I think it will be good for the community in an area, again, that's been blighted for so long. This educational institution, they want to expand their campus. That's good for them. It'll be good for us, and we have an opportunity to partner with them in the future to bring great things to the neighborhood. And I'm a big proponent, in case no one knew, of urban revitalization, and this is a key, a capstone of where this can really start, south of Locust, in addition to what's been going on. Coming up from downtown, the Hilltop, the Village of East Davenport, we have a lot of areas that are starting to come up. Let's come together on a positive note and move this forward, and I anticipate seeing all of you in the meetings that we'll be having about revitalization so you can provide some input to make, to help make the plan comprehensive and inclusive of everyone. So please do not stop coming to the meetings because that so often happens with human beings, because that's the thing about humans. If you let something go long enough, people forget. Stay engaged. Come to the public sessions that we'll be having about revitalization, how we're going to pull all this together and deal with housing issues across the central city. Stay engaged with us. So I think I'll leave my comments there. Yes, just in summary, this is not the end of the process. This is just the beginning. So no one needs to be too alarmed. We will be having a lot more discussion on this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rossin. And as I said before, with this great discussion, thank you all in the public. Thank you all of my colleagues. With that, will the clerk call the roll on the third consideration of this ordinance?
Mattson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kluw?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. The ordinance is adopted. I would like now approval of all the items on the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kluw?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. And again, I would just mention, for those of you who haven't come to these meetings before, that section was all discussed in great detail last week at our community hall. That's the consent agenda, so just to bring you up to speed with that. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions or motions this evening? I see there are none. Is there any public with business tonight? If there are, please come up. Identify yourself for your five-minute presentation.
Ron Swiner, 2366 West 47th. I'll make this sweep. Chief, thank you for everything you've done for this community. Our police department's doing the max. Our court system's not helping. So I got a challenge for the council, city administrator and the employees. Let's figure a way to give our police department some more personnel, a little boost. Maybe it's time, if the chief had a little more manpower, maybe he can do a little preventative. I've had the pleasure of riding with the Nets program. I'd like to see it expanded, you know? Come out, mother's vehicle been searched in her own driveway, for goodness sake. Vehicles being stolen, chases. I know we have major works in the process for our department, but amenities, things we chase, I think we need to take a little step back because no matter what we do for this community, statues, skate park, squirt park, pools, if you don't feel safe in the community, you're not going to bring the people in. We need to make the citizens feel a little safer. We need to give our police department a boost. We need to figure out a way to do that, to increase the Nets program to where the officers can run parts of town and not have to handle calls unless they're in an emergency. We need to have a little better, a little bigger police presence out there. It's the only way, folks. You want to make it a destination, let's make it a little safer. It's food for thought. It's a challenge I give this council and this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public with business this evening? Seeing none, excuse me, sir, just a moment.